Good evening and welcome to the Putnam County, Putnam Valley Board of Education Work Session Business Meeting of September 10th, 2020. I would like to reconvene our meeting following our executive session, and I'd ask everybody to join me as we stand and salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like first to resolve to approve the minutes for the August 27th, 2020, meeting of the Board of Education.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, I would like to turn it over for our first Pride in Putnam Valley in a very long time. Dr. Love.
I know. I didn't do enough of them last year. So, we have some very special guests with us tonight, some very familiar faces and some maybe not. So, the first individual that I wanted to recognize tonight, and I remember, sort of go down, walk down memory lane, I remember she called my cellphone one day in March, and I was wondering how she got my cellphone number. And then, she introduced herself as a public health nurse from Putnam County, and that she was going to be the school liaison for this COVID thing, which was really just sort of kicking off. We thought we were closed for a couple days or a couple weeks back then. And fast forward to where we are in September, I'm pretty sure I've spoken to her a couple thousand times. And she has really proven to be a godsend, not just to this district, but all the districts in Putnam County. I know that not all districts in the area, depending on what county they're in, experienced the same level of support. I was on a call this morning, when there's certainly many issues in unnamed departments of health, and the six of us in Putnam County just sat there in like silence, because we did not experience the same issues as they are. So, we have, we meet twice a week, we have Zoom calls twice a week. So, and Ms. Shanna Siegel has been instrumental in those meetings, providing us sort of the most current information, always available to answer questions we have, no matter how silly they may seem, and has really helped not just Putnam Valley, but all the districts in the region to get through this, to be in a place. Now, I'm sure she'll never admit it, we get first dibs, because she is also a Putnam Valley parent. So, I remind her all the time that if like, she gets two districts to call at the same time, she has to take our phone call first. But really, I don't know, in retrospect, looking back, and even looking forward, I could never have imagined going through this without having Shanna a phone call away, a text message away, an email away, to be able to help us get through it. So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank her, to acknowledge her efforts, and to tell her that I hope in the near future, we don't have to talk as often. And COVID's gone. All right? So, congratulations.
We don't shake hands, I suppose, and your friends can come with you.
She's on the phone.
I'll give it to you. She's been on a lot of the calls, a little more.
Thank you, Shanna. Thank you so much.
I was on a lot of the calls that Shanna was on, and I will say, as a non-nurse, just as a normal, regular person, I mean, it really helped to hear clearly what, you know, clear advice, you know, helpful suggestions. It was just, you know, it wasn't like lawyer speak, but was just real health advice. So, I appreciate it, Shanna.
I have to agree with Barbara on that, and there's some times when the questions would be asked, Dr. Love would go to answer, and I'm like, "Don't let Shanna answer it." You did an amazing job, thank you.
Well, a side story of that, I started getting requests for if Shanna can go to their, participate in their district's plans, even though they were not from Putnam County. So, other parents that are Putnam Valley, parents that work in other school districts were like, "Hey, do you think she'll come on our phone call too?" And I'm like, "Uh, you're gonna have to talk to her about that." But yes, 100%, it was, it was very, trying to get a good word.
Well, refreshing, to sort through all of the misinformation with clean, easy-to-act-on advice.
Sounds, sounds better than I could say.
Somebody in this superintendent's group told me that I'm very skilled at delivering bad movies.
Well, how many times did I open our meeting with like, "All right, what's the good news? Do we have a vaccine yet, or is it gone? Did we find out that sunlight kills it, nothing?"
Yelling at it really loud.
Yelling, yeah. Well, thanks again, Shanna.
And we appreciate you.
Thanks, girls.
Shanna, is your other daughter an elementary school child, or a middle school?
Sequoia, just started fifth grade here.
Okay, that's, you looked very fifth gradish.
If your supervisors' districts have a problem, you get bumped.
Uh-oh.
Welcome to the middle school.
All right, so, our next Pride in PV, I wanted to recognize really an entire department, and Mr. David Spittle is here as a supervisor of that department to take the award on their behalf. But for those who work in school districts, or aware what happens in a school district over the summer, there's a tremendous amount of work that happens in these buildings to get them ready to reopen schools, and that's in a typical year. This year, we added in COVID, which was disinfection, cleaning, new supplies, water, sprayers, everything else that goes along with it. We emptied, how many shipping containers worth of furniture from our classrooms? Nine 60-foot shipping containers worth of furniture, which is a little upsetting. But all of that is extra work on top of the work that they do every summer to prepare our buildings. So, our next Pride in PV goes to the entire Putnam Valley Buildings and Grounds staff, and under the leadership of Dave Spittle. It would not be possible for us to be here if it wasn't for them, both from a cleaning and disinfection, and then you throw in a $15 million construction project, which went till midnight each night through Labor Day weekend, with Dave and his department here, following the construction crews through cleaning spaces to ensure that we were able to open our buildings to students on Tuesday. So, I recognize the efforts of many, and the dedication they have to the district. There were times where I was not sure we would be able to open to students on Tuesday, and that was going to be a horrifying email to send the parents on Monday to let them know. But Dave and his crew refused to let that be a reality, and did everything they could through the Labor Day weekend and over the entire summer to allow us to open. So, I do want to recognize Mr. David Spittle and his department for their tireless work this summer. Thank you. I don't know if Shanna saw that, I don't think we're allowed to fist bump either.
It wasn't a handshake.
And you actually just pretend you didn't make contact.
So, the last Pride in PV for this meeting, as a former technology director, I certainly recognize the amount of work that happens, that happens within the technology department through the summer, whether it be refurbishing machines, getting them ready to be redeployed, upgrading infrastructure, and all the other updates that typically happen. Again, this department was asked to do that, and three times more. I remember meeting with our technology director, Michael Lee, at the beginning of the summer and saying, "Listen, I need you to collect those laptops back and get them back out to students in like a week or two." And he was like, "All right, we can do that." And I was like, "Oh, and as the new ones come in, I need them all to be configured so the elementary school students can take them home and be able to use them like the first day if needed." He was like, "Okay, we can do that." And then we were like, "Oh, and when all the teachers come back, we need you guys to run professional development and training to teach them how to use all these new tools." And he was like, "All right, we can do that." And then, I was like, "All right, and we need to figure out how to get Wi-Fi to the families who don't have wireless access at home, because even if you're a remote learning student, you need to be able to do that." So he said, "All right, we can figure out how to do that." So, that's on top of all the other things they typically do. And then, along the same construction timelines, we're like, "Okay, the electricians are wiring the building, they should be done by midnight tonight, we need that Wi-Fi in there tomorrow morning." They're like, "All right, we can do that." So, I just want to recognize Michael Lee and the technology department, including our own Daniel Mahoney right here, who again was instrumental. I could say, we had a phone call superintendent's today, and they were talking about how they were tracking the home screening information and the teacher screening information. I think we may be the only district in the region that is not paying for a third-party tool. A third-party tool, which according to the reviews I got today, none of them work very well. Dan was instrumental, he built his own tool using Google Forms and a dashboard. It did things I didn't even know it did until recently, so then of course I asked him if he can do that for more people. But truly, the dedication, the knowledge, the skill, the ability of the individuals we have here really makes this a truly special place, and the technology department worked around the clock to make us, get us ready to open, and to provide us the tools we need to keep our students and staff safe here. So, on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to recognize our technology department as our Pride in PV. Thank you.
Can we do maybe like Wakanda hugs, or air hugs, or since we can't handshake? Because you know what I love, Jeremy, I mean, that two of our Pride in PVs are the positions that are almost the invisible behind-the-scenes positions in the district, Buildings and Grounds and Technology, teachers are up there, teachers aides, we're in, but it's the behind-the-scenes. And if you don't have your base, you can't put anything on it. So, perfect timing that they're both awarded, and our heartfelt thanks.
I think it's a very real statement. When you work in what I would call a service industry, which is our Buildings and Grounds and our technology staff, you tend to hear from individuals when something is wrong. This is missing, this is broken, this isn't working. Rarely does anyone run up to Mike or any of his team and say, "Hey, just want to let you know, Wi-Fi's great today." Right? Or anyone runs up to Dave or anyone in his group and says, "Hey, thank you for emptying my garbage can last night." You just, you never, you never receive that, and I think this year, more so than any other year, it's really been recognized, not just by us, but by the masses. The people have really been impressed. I mean, there is, there are districts that did not open for students, because they did not have the team that we had to do the work, because their facilities were simply not ready. They didn't have, they still had too much furniture, they didn't have social distancing in the classrooms, they didn't have the cleaning supplies. Like Dave started ordering PPE and cleaning supplies in March.
March 15.
And it's why we have access to the PPE that we have, and the cleaning materials we have to open, where other districts are closed, because they simply don't have access to those tools. So, being in the service industry, and maybe it hits home, because I was a tech director for so many years, you rarely ever hear the accolades. That's why I thought it was important to recognize both those departments here in a public manner for all their work.
And to quote kind of soap opera actor awards, "We couldn't do the job we do and look so good without you," so thank you.
Actually, I think my very first boss said to me, "If you want to be successful," before computers, Mike, so they didn't mention any of the technology, "If you want to be successful, make friends with your custodian and your office manager, because without them, the place can't run." So, and it's true. Okay, you want to keep talking, Dr. Love? We're in presentations, want to talk about, want to talk about the opening of schools?
You guys got to take mom out for ice cream or something now?
Don't say the word unless you can promise it.
Oh, sorry. All right, so, opening of schools and district goal discussion. So, I'm going to share in a little bit some of our draft goals and the process we went through to get there today. As everyone knows, we spoke a little bit about all the work that went into opening our schools, especially from our facilities and our technology department. I have to say, it's, you almost forgot what it was like to have students and staff here since March, and how long it's been, and seeing students in the hallway, and their smiling eyes, because you can't see their faces, actually smile hugs, they're all wearing masks. But it's how excited students are to be back, and really teachers, how excited they are to be back. It's truly been a blessing. I'm happy that we were able to get here today. It was a tremendous amount of work to be able to open, but I think the students, the staff, and the community greatly appreciate the fact that our schools are open. So, I would just encourage everyone to keep up the good work, encouraging everyone that their actions outside of school will directly impact our ability to keep schools open. So, people should continue to follow those best practices outside of school, and for as long as that happens, I'm optimistic that our schools will stay open and our students will keep learning. So, that's my quick overview of the opening of schools. So, from a goals perspective, and these are draft goals, I'm going to share them in a presentation mode last week, but I just want to take everyone through the process. So, the Board of Education met during our board retreat and developed board goals. Those board goals were then shared with our administrative team, and the administrative team went through a similar process and set their own goals, and as luck would have it, they were very much aligned, which is always a good sign. So, I'll just read sort of the general overview of goals, and then next meeting, I'll give more of a formal presentation. So, our first goal has to do with the student experience, and it says, "The safety of all students and staff in the Putnam Valley School District remains our highest priority. The Board of Education is committed to the following items to support our overall student experience." And then it lists some items. Our next goal has to do with our academic program. Our academic program is the core of our school district. The Putnam Valley Board of Education will ensure the rigor and effectiveness of our academic program. The next one is fiscal balance. We must maintain a fiscal balance between our revenues and expenses. The Putnam Valley Board of Education will respect the needs of both our students in our schools and the Putnam Valley community we serve. The next one has to do with communication strategies. Open and honest communication is vital during challenging times. The Putnam Valley Board of Education is committing to, committed to the following strategies to improve our, the following strategies to improve our communication strategies. And the last one speaks to continuous improvement. The Board of Education remains committed to maintaining a culture of continuous improvement, and goes through the bullets for that. So, we're just in the final stages of adopting these goals. So, next board meeting, I'll give a formal presentation, and then we'll provide an opportunity for the board to approve the goals, both the board goals and district goals, which are very much aligned. So, is there any questions about the goals themselves? Okay, thank you. I get a break now, right?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Dougherty, Special Education, to talk about our Special Education District Plan for the upcoming school year.
Good evening. Normally, I would be at the dais, so.
Is it on?
Yeah. Put on it. So, normally, I would present from the dais, but since I'm not at a, we don't have a typical dais, I'm going to stand up here. So, it's not really a presentation, it really is a conversation. Our special ed plan is due every two years. Last year, the board accepted it and presented it, but we have a new CSC chairperson who just spent our first year with us, so I thought it was a good exercise for her to really go through it, and to redo, to look for things, to add our new programs. So, really, it's a document that has to be approved by the board every two years. It's on our website. Melissa Estrella is our new CSC chairperson, and she has done a fantastic job. So, she really went through the plan, updated it with our new programs, updated it with our new, with any new laws or regulations that have changed. And so, really, it is sort of a standard thing that we do every two years, even though we did it last year, we decided to do it again, so Melissa could get some experience and really dive into it. So, the board, you know, it's really just lays out our programs and services. Anybody have questions about it?
So, did she make changes? Are there?
So, she made some changes, really just to our class sizes. Some of our ratios have changed, like we have two new classes at the elementary school that are now 8-1-2 classes, so it's eight students, one teacher, and two assistants in that class, and so those are two new class sizes that we have. We were doing a 12-1-1, but we felt that the ratio, because of the students and their needs that they have, we felt that the lower ratio with more support was needed, and was more in line with the state regulations. So, that was one thing. Some of the other things were the schools that we send our students to, the out-of-district students, some of those schools have changed, and the regulations have pretty much stayed the same. We added some new information that wasn't in there, that we thought could be useful to parents, also advocacy services, things like that.
Was there anything because of COVID that pushed a change, or?
No, no, there were no changes due to COVID, not in this plan. Of course, there are other changes that we've made, and that we're required to do. But the regs haven't changed.
So, you adapted the classes, and anything that you took out?
No, nothing that we took out, just changes and additions, nothing that we removed.
I did notice that there's a continuum, continuum of services. And there's no language that specifically talks about like double dip, like, you know, that a child that gets this can't get that. It's all dependent on the needs of the child.
Okay. Is there any other questions? If there are any questions later on, feel free.
Would there ever be, if there was another school that came up, how would that work?
So, again, it's just sort of a rolling list, because obviously, we change, out-of-district placements can change, or they can add, or, and really, we're only required to do it every two years, so we just update it every two years. I have been doing it every year, because we do make some of those changes, and I prefer to keep it updated.
Okay, great.
So, but it's really only required every two years.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Actually, I forgot, can I back up to Jeremy's opening of school thing? I did, I did have a parent ask me, what is the, and since Mike's here, that might help, what is the procedure, or what do, what do students or parents do if they lose internet access? I mean, it went down the other day for a whole day, but it went out the other day for an hour or so, or, I don't know. Is there a way of reporting, like, so that the student doesn't get automatically absent? The student has panicked, because it's all of a sudden gone down, and he's supposed to be on, whatever. I don't, I don't know if that stuff has gone out to high school, middle school, students, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think internet access is obviously outside of our control, internet access they have at their individual homes, so they would have to follow the escalation, troubleshooting process that was through their provider. For many, it would be an optimum, right? I mean, they would have to do, even individual families have some service level agreement with the providers, just when they can, how long it takes them to get out there, and the restoration time is obviously outside of our control. But certainly, we would not, if the family notified the school district, we would, wouldn't penalize the student.
So, the parent or student should just call the, their school?
I mean, I would just send, I mean, they could send an email, they could reach out to the teacher when they have their service restored. And just say, like, "I'm sorry, I lost it for the time, and can I make up the work?" We have to be understanding, and this is uncharted waters for everyone.
Okay.
And you're right, I mean, we joke around that loss of internet is our new snow day, because it really brings our instruction to a halt, both whether it be in school or at home. So, we may no longer have snow days, but we may have internet service days. So, it's unfortunate that that's where we are now, in terms of how we deliver curriculum, but it's the world we live in right now. So, obviously, I'm sure that optimum, whatever their internet service provider is, we do everything we could to get them restored as soon as possible. At the district level, if we have something here, we have a higher level of service level agreement, so they have sort of a shorter expectation for turnaround time. We get like priority service, but it's always a possibility.
If it gets to be a problem, maybe there should be like a direct, you know, there should be a reporting place that would make it easier for us to, I don't know, I don't know. I do know that even myself, and it's not like anything I'm doing is so valuable, but if I'm supposed to be at a meeting, and then, and it won't connect, or whatever, then it's like, ah, you know, so I just, I don't want to see kids, that stress added to them, and I don't know if teachers have discussed it.
I was going to say, I would also assume that the teachers, that if they haven't discussed it, should, because, for example, I work from home full-time, and I know if mine goes down, I have a protocol to follow. So, I would assume that the teachers, or I would hope the teachers would also have a protocol set up.
Right. And again, I think it's just, if the students, they need to access Google Classroom and get their work, if they, depending upon when they lose it, if they've already printed out a worksheet, they can work on something. If they can't, no longer access it, I'm not going to ask a student to drive to Panera to get internet access, you know, miss the rest of the period. I think we just have to be understanding that these type of things do happen, and they will happen, and we have to provide the student ample time to make up for any missed work during that outage.
Okay.
I heard from a parent where they lost the internet access, and they were very, they called the school on the phone, and the school passed a note to the teacher, and the teacher actually called them back after class, way after class, to talk to the student, one-on-one, and the parent, talk about the work they missed, and the student, the parent was so impressed how the student, the teacher was so dedicated to educating his child. It was very impressive.
Nice to hear, yeah. Okay.
You know, a lot of our kids are rule followers, and flexibility is the name of the game. That's important. Okay, the public, and that includes the board, can speak on any of the listed agenda items?
There's no emails.
Thank you.
I've got a boatload of things, but I'll wait till the second comment period.
Okay, I'll be ready. All right, then, Mr., for us, since we're going to wait, we're going to have you talk anyway, can you move us into new business and number one?
Resolved on recommendation, superintendent of schools to adapt, sorry, adopt the Special Education Plan for 2020 through 2022 as per document number 4821 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Mary Ann McAlwin, a middle school Spanish teacher from the district effective September 27th, 2020, as per document number 49-21 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Mary Ann Rainieri, a lunch monitor at the elementary school from the district effective August 28th, 2020, as per document number 50/21 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Kayla Morales as a Point IV FTE social worker, leave replacement at the elementary school, effective September 8th, 2020 through November 9th, 2020, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education, on Step 2 MA of the PVFT salary schedule. This appointment is in addition to Ms. Morales's current Point 6 FTE position as a social worker at the high school. Ms. Morales has provisional certification as a school social worker.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Ms. Morales says, as was mentioned, she currently works in the high school three days a week. We're bringing her into the elementary school, those additional two days each week, to help support our elementary school students as they transition back into school.
All right, terrific. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number five.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to conditionally appoint Brian Fitzmaurice to a probationary appointment as a campus monitor at the middle school effective September 10th, 2020, with a probationary period of 52 weeks through September 10th, 2021, pending fingerprint clearance on Step 2 of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number six.
Resolved to create a position of teaching assistant at the middle school, and resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the board appoints Sabrina Dring to a four-year probationary term in the teaching assistant position commencing on October 5th, 2020, and terminating on October 4th, 2024, in the teaching assistant tenure area on Step 1 of the CSEA teaching assistant salary schedule, prorated and in accordance with PVCSD policy. prorated and in accordance with PVCSD policy nine-two-five-zero. Ms. Dring holds teaching assistant level one certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Kaylee Hartnett to a provisional appointment as a library aide effective September fifteenth, twenty-twenty at the middle school on step three of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Kathleen Keough to a probationary appointment pending fingerprint clearance as a school monitor effective September fifteenth, twenty-twenty with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And I keep getting clothes out of my screen here, sorry, sorry.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through eight as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving budget transfers to help us pay for pupil PPE supplies. And we're transferring money from various other things so we can pay for that. We're approving a contract with the Schindler Elevator Corporation to help maintain and for security in our buildings. We're approving additional workouts for two employees who monitored SATs and CS, and one doing CSEA placements during the past summer months. We're approving a final contract with Putt Northern Westchester Bowses for services for the coming year. We're approving a revised substitute team list and we're approving all the department and grade level chairmen. So for each of the, from first grade all the way up through the courses at the high school, we're approving all of those people who are actually the chairpeople of each of the departments. And if I'm not mistaken, that was the last one.
I think you asked, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so spotlight topics?
So just looking ahead, I already have, um, Mr. David Spittle is working on a presentation to cover the facilities with an eye towards the construction project. So I've already invited him into, uh, to present before the next board meeting on the twenty-fourth. So he'll give more of a presentation, show some slides and really take the community through some of the work that was completed through our construction project. So that was one item I definitely wanted to spotlight next meeting, but I didn't know if the board had anything else.
Do, I'm trying to remember, do, at what point do we bring the principals in to do a little their own presentation of opening? Given how crazy this is, maybe October?
Yeah.
It just says from, from, I mean, you can tell us, but I know they've often come in and a little, just an update of what's happening this year, challenges this year, how did it open, what's, you know?
Yeah, well, we could, we could define those presentations in any way.
Right.
We want.
You can spread them out and do them all in one day, whatever. I can't think of anything else.
And as you mentioned earlier, next meeting we'll be discussing the goals. So we should have a more formal presentation, we'll at least put them up on the screen.
No, I'm going to make a presentation for the district goals next meeting.
Good, and between that and facility, that's going to be a heavy, that's going to be a busy meeting. Okay, opening it up now on public comments or topics for any topics.
Hey, I'm going to have a couple before Joe starts.
Okay, go ahead.
Because I realized I didn't have any, uh, any superintendents report. So there was really a lot of it we already spoke about, um, during the presentation piece of it. But I did want to point out, actually, there was some very exciting news that we were just notified that, uh, Putnam Valley High School, uh, that Holly Libertor is, has been named a national merit semifinalist. So I think it's been, in talking to Dr. and Trari, it's been several years since we've had one and that's a great honor. Uh, so I wanted to make sure to highlight that. Uh, Dave Spittle and myself were invited to a walkthrough of the Pudding Street Bridge project yesterday. Um, where the project manager was there and the construction firm. So we got to sort of walk through the actual, uh, grounds over, we didn't get to cross the bridge itself. Uh, but that's nearing completion, I hope. But, uh, it was exciting to see it, uh, all the rock blasting and really how much work they've already accomplished. So I know their goal is still to be done later in the spring and maybe we'll be surprised and they'll be done a little bit earlier. But it's a tremendous amount of work and I know it'll be a huge asset to the school district when that bridge is complete. So that was something that was pretty cool. We also had a meeting with the PTA. Obviously the PTA is struggling with their traditional events, uh, and how those events operate within the COVID world. So I know we've been brainstorming ideas for how we can continue to support the PTA and continue to encourage parents to come out and join the PTA and how the PTA can be there to support parents, uh, without having lots of sort of in-person events. Most of their events where individuals come out for, um, would not qualify as safe under the regulations we're currently in. So, uh, that work will be continuing and we're willing to partner with the PTA in any way we can. But I just encourage everyone to be on the lookout for any sort of virtual PTA events and encourage individuals to still be involved.
Can I jump in before Joe? Janine and I took a field, little field trip past Pudding Street the other day. So it is really coming along. It's interesting to see and you can now drive underneath the overpass. So it's really, it's really cool. I'm glad to see how it's progressing. Um, can you speak along with that to the buses? How, you know, we talked about opening a school, how did the buses do this week?
Yeah, I mean, I, I've actually, I've been very happy with the opening of schools in terms of transportation. We've had struggles in the past, but I have not really heard of, um, any issues regarding buses or drivers or routes over the first couple of days. We're still, obviously we're refining our arrival and dismissal processes. There's a lot that's different. We have four additional buses at the elementary school. We have, um, a large increase in the amount of parents that are driving their students to and from. So that's creating more congestion. Lesson issue here, where only fifty percent of the students are in in the middle school and high school. A much larger issue at the elementary school where all the students are in. So we've been noticing as more grades come in, as we stagger our start. Today we had first through fourth grade in and off in the morning drop-off and the pickup, you start to see parents backing up. We have hired additional staff to help supervise that. It's really sort of all hands on from parents, I'm sorry, from teachers, teaching assistants, monitors. Everybody's out there. Uh, administrators were out there today in the pouring rain trying to help facilitate the process. We're making changes every day to try to speed up the process as much as possible. But at the end of the day, the elementary school, there's one way in, there's one way out. It's a busy road and you could only put so many cars and buses in that driveway. So it's going to be, for as long as this goes on and we have the number, the amount of traffic we have, I just would encourage individuals to stagger their times, right? So if you're a parent dropping off the elementary school, try not to get there right when the buses are getting there. If you come a couple of minutes early or a couple of minutes later, it'll be a much more efficient process than if you get there at the same time as the buses are waiting to unload. But other than that, I think we've been very happy with the transportation. And, um, and again, everyone's doing the best they can to expedite their arrival and dismissal process.
Is traffic backing up onto Oskawana in the middle of the school or no?
It is in the morning, and, no, sorry, on Oskawana in the morning at the elementary school. It has a couple of times. Part of the issue is our arrival process, students are released directly to their classrooms. We no longer have, we used to stage the students in the auditorium. So we had sort of, the buses would drop off as soon as they arrived and leave. Now as the buses show up, they have to queue and wait until, uh, the students can be released directly to their classrooms. So as the buses back up the driveway and the car, parent traffic starts to back up and that's pushed people out onto Oskawana the past couple of mornings. So we're doing everything we can. We change the process in which the buses queue, um, to try to get more buses up there off the driveway to make more room for parent traffic. I think ultimately parents are going to have to adjust their timing to avoid arriving with the buses.
And just on the transportation in the Pudding Street, it was, I never go on that side of Putnam Valley. So it was exciting going to Pudding Street. But I remember in, Dr. Left, I think it was the day we appointed you that two of our middle school math teachers had done a problem-based learning experience, um, Mrs. Conlon and Ms. Vanderbilt, um, about designing the bridge over the Pudding Street when these eleventh graders were seventh graders. And somebody said then they're going to be the first class to drive over the bridges they designed. So it really is kind of, I feel like we've come full circle and that our community's been a part of this from the very beginning, so.
It's a good memory. The night I was appointed, we were in the middle school cafeteria looking at all the student models of the bridges before the board meeting that night.
I know. And those children are now eleventh graders. Where did that happen? Okay, I, I had heard rumors that Mr. Fer, you have a couple of things you'd like to bring up?
I have a few things. And maybe this becomes part of a future discussion or maybe it doesn't. I, I'm, I've seen some things on social media, which is always a dangerous thing. But this is really more about, um, the student code of conduct and, um, how our policy, if our policy is correct or up to date enough or it actually addresses the issue of masking or social distancing as a behavior. Um, anywhere on our campus, I understand the idea of walking on the track and that's typically going to be less of an issue than people say on the field without masks in groups of three or four, taking these pictures where they're really close to each other. Uh, and, and I know who these, these people are, I'm not calling anybody out. But I think there needs to be an expectation because it does affect the entire school district when you have students, maybe not during school hours, on our property not exhibiting safe social distancing and masking. And that could jeopardize the district in its health. So I think there needs to be either, uh, I don't know if in, it's part of a change to our, uh, student contract or if it is just, it's already built into there and we just need to elaborate from the principal or from the superintendent, reinforcing the idea that it's not just during school time and when you're in class, when you're on this campus, just like you can't vape in the building, you can't vape outside the building. It's the same thing, uh, because it puts a lot of people at, could put people at risk. Um, and I understand, and this is mostly going to be a high school situation because those students can drive to this campus and at other times. Um, but if they're on this campus, they need to be practicing safely. Uh, and, because we don't want any exposure on, on the district side. We don't want to have to go back to full remote for everybody. So I don't know if, again, if our policy takes care of that or, uh, we need to change it or we need to have just more emphasis put on there by the principals to notify students that that's important and it's not just, you know, the eight o'clock to one-fifty time period that these rules apply.
No, it's a good point. I know we, we underwent a pretty substantial change to our code of conduct, probably pre-COVID, right before that all hit. We have checked with our attorneys since then to see if they had recommendations for things that needed to be added to the code of conduct. I think they feel strongly that the language in the code of conduct covers all of these sort of new rules that are put in place. But I think what it comes down to and what you're speaking to is really about, um, notifying students of our expectations of behaviors, uh, both in school and outside of school and making sure that they're aware that those behaviors, whether in school or out of school, can still be held to the standards of the code of conduct. So my understanding is, we just need to communicate those expectations to our students and that our code of conduct would cover, um, any actions then.
Oh, and I think along.
Carrie, I was just going to say, taking the next step though, like I was down at the field this afternoon. I can't tell you how many adults and they weren't, from the same family, were associating not wearing masks. And you can see where that would influence a student who is here, you know, late in the afternoon and they see these adults, so why do I need a mask when I'm running around?
Are there signs going to the field or anywhere that says masks must be worn or?
I'd have to check if the signs are still there. I know we had signs that were up on the fields during, um, during the spring. I'd have to check with Mr. Spittle or if there's still.
Because the code of conduct actually refers to not just students, it refers to anybody on our campus.
Right.
Um, but people who aren't, you know, that sign these things, just the, the public are not necessarily, uh, either aware because you do see people smoking, you do see people vaping on campus. I think similarly, I think it's, uh, we need to be clear, uh, in, in that, in that manner.
And I'm, I'm not saying that signing would stop it. Jeanette and I were on the field, there's big signs, the road is closed, you know, just before graduation. People were driving past the sign and we're like, no, you can't park it. Um, but I, but at least then you could point to the sign and say, I'm sorry, but masks are required. You know what I mean? Like I, I think that we, that's part of our responsibility too, to make sure that, that the people that know that they're walking here should be wearing a mask.
Go find a microphone, Dr. Hardy. And I, well, and I think, Dr. Left, what you said about telling all expectations. I received an email today, um, how to teach Zoom etiquette to your students. You know, so it's certainly code of conduct about how to behave, but behaving in a room of eighteen to twenty-five is different than behaving when you're looking at a little screen. So we do have to teach it, we can't just assume it.
Right, and we sent out a whole, before schools opened, a whole document on student and parent expectations and it covered all of those expectations, not just about participation and attendance and following your schedule, but about how to look and act when you're on a Zoom meeting and you should act when you're in class and you shouldn't be eating or.
In bed.
In your bed.
In your bed, yeah, or inappropriately dressed or any of the sorts. So we sort of sent out all those expectations to all families and students before school opened. But we could certainly reiterate them.
I think, I think one of the things, again, like you're saying is really.
It's on.
It's for us to really start bombard, not bombardi, but really communicating heavily with the public that the longer and the more diligent that we are about mask-wearing, social distancing and hand washing, the longer we can keep our schools open. And we hope to do that for our students because we see their faces every day. We see them grateful to be here. We see them getting back into, um, a normal, more typical routine. So the more we, the more families that are on board and can practice this, um, the more we're going to be able to have students in school. So I think, again, going back to making sure that we're, you know, communicating with their families that when you're on our property, this is, these are our expectations, the better off we are. So certainly signage will help, but I guess, you know, sort of going back to your point, Dr. Left, it's, it's really about getting those communications out more regularly on our expectations, so.
Last thing I want to do is become Sunni Onianta, like two weeks after getting classes started, sending everybody home again.
Yeah.
Um, additionally, sorry, my notes keep closing. I know we had, there was, a lot of the superintendents wanted, were looking for, uh, the governor to change his mind on some of the athletics because the idea of making sense where you're supposed to wear a mask and be six feet apart in a classroom, but you can play soccer or field hockey and be running up against people from another town over, three towns over, et cetera, et cetera. How that makes sense when you're really breathing heavily. Um, and, you know, this is more of the, my thinking is more the college model. Is there any anticipation or thought about the requirements of a negative COVID test to participate in athletics?
So what I know about athletics and these conversations are happening on a daily basis. Uh, myself and our AD, Brian Burrow, catch up every day. Um, section one in the state are working through all of these now. I have not seen anything about a negative COVID test. They're, but they're addressing things like health screenings before competitions, spectators, whether or not athletes need to wear masks, um, all of those things, sort of the guidance is trickling out. Some of the most recent announcements were the state Athletic Association has announced that they were moving those high, uh, high, not the right, high, uh, risk sports, which are football, volleyball.
Cheerleading.
And cheerleading. We won't get into the rationale why those are the three, but that those were, have been moved to a shortened season beginning March first, I believe. I think that's a smart move. I think the way the regulations were set up now, if they started. I think the way the regulations were set up now, if they started practicing, they could only practice, having played high school football, I can't imagine how many high school football players are gonna come out just to practice. So I think their best hope of having a season and competition is to wait and see what happens, because I don't think that's ever gonna happen in the fall. So I, I fully support that move. I still have questions and concerns about restarting low- to medium-risk sports, of which somehow soccer is one of them, but it's, right now, section one, the date they have set for those sports to begin is September twenty-ninth. Competition's beginning, I think, October tenth. So as we wait for the guidelines to come out, exactly what that'll look like, I'm certainly not gonna stand between our kids and the opportunity to compete, at least at the varsity sports level, if section one in the state are gonna continue to move forward. So I would still encourage them to consider the condensed seasons in the spring, because I think that provides students a more realistic opportunity to compete and get through a full season, or even if it's a shortened season. But as of right now, section one plans on starting those low- to medium-risk sports on the twenty-ninth of September, they can start practicing. So we're just awaiting the finalized guidelines for what those practices and competitions will look like.
Might be done, let me see. We talked about, oh, two things. This year, probably more than any year in the recent past at least, the flu vaccine's very important. Typically, we've, we've had these partnerships with the county, but that usually is not until mid to late October, and people are talking about needing it, getting it as early as possible. I'm wondering what we're doing as a district, if we are working with the county to secure flu vaccines for our district and for our students, and to encourage that as early as possible.
So you're a hundred percent correct, it's a big push to make sure that everyone who is able to gets the flu vaccine. Obviously, our schedules, the hybrid schedules that are in place complicate our traditional flu vaccine. The county has told us that they're unable to accommodate multiple days at a building, so they can't be at the middle school one day for the A group, and then the next day for the B group. We are scheduled at the elementary school, which for us works out well, because we have all our elementary school students in, September thirtieth is the date, and there'll be more information going out, flyers, and how to sign up and register, because a lot has to be done beforehand. So there will be a flu clinic at the elementary school, open to all students and staff on September thirtieth, and then we're picking a date, but then there's gonna be sort of a general, I won't say community-wide, but by community, I mean, any other students or staff within the district can register to attend a separate flu clinic that'll be open. So it'll be in one of our gyms, it'll run after school hours, so individuals who are working have an opportunity to get their children there, and that'll sort of be the opportunity for middle school and high school students, for remote only learners at the elementary school, to go to this sort of catch-all flu clinic to get their shot.
Then, I guess, we talked about kind of the, the snow day going away, and I guess it was an official message from the governor about snow days. But I guess the question is, if there is a, what would have been a snow day, what is the ramifications on where the teachers teach from? Because we're not, you know, the idea, you know, you can still have, I guess, a two-hour delay, and if that works, but if it's a really bad storm, are you gonna either do a, some sort of snow day, which I guess is not an existent thing now, or are they gonna be able to do those teachings from, from home remotely?
So, yeah, the state had said something where they're allowing sort of districts to pilot virtual snow days for this school year, so something we sort of suspected would be coming, but this is the first we've actually heard of it. We've begun having conversations with the teachers' union, but sort of other than, hey, did you see that this is an option, we haven't really progressed beyond that, but it's something that we would certainly discuss, the pros, and I think there's some cons of it as well, but to figure out how to best support our students. Something that came up in the conversation with administrator today regarding a delay, if you think about how disruptive a two- or three-hour delay in the morning is, combined with an hour early dismissal, which is our, now our typical schedule, it's a very short period of time, actually, here, with the added risk of getting everyone in and home safely, where if those days that would otherwise be a delay became a remote instructional day, there would actually be a greater amount of instruction taking place during those days. So we're certainly, the district's willing to consider it, and we've already begun conversations with the, the teachers, and we will with the C S E A union as well, to figure out sort of the details behind it, and what that can mean for our students.
The last thing I have, we got an email from Jill Flegorella about the need for, emergency need for a vehicle, a maintenance vehicle, can you tell more about what that is?
Yeah, so our, we have the one dump truck in the district, the motor went in it. So even though we have our own mechanic, it's gonna be really costly and time-consuming to fix it, so we were down that vehicle, so we're making do. They were using an old rack body truck to get their equipment back and forth, and then that truck actually just broke down itself. So now we're down two vehicles. We're making do what we have, but we know that we start getting to inclement weather and stuff like that, we need those vehicles to be able to plow our parking lots and driveways and stuff like that. So we, we knew we were gonna need something, we were hoping it'd be a few years away. We had a truck that was on order last year, a rack body that we had been waiting for for many months, we actually canceled that order, so we do have some savings there for that truck order that we canceled. So now we're looking to purchase a new dump truck, as we're still exploring the possibility of fixing the old one. That's a vehicle we could certainly use, more than one of.
And then we had a tour earlier today of some of the buildings, and there was mention of a broken back, how is that getting repaired?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's the, the older blue one, not, not the new one, but that, the smaller one, that they needed to access that space, it was a part that was on order. So with COVID and shipping delays and shutdowns, parts are often hard to come by, so it, once the part comes in, that'll be fixed.
Then in general, based on, on our tour, buildings look fantastic, and, you know, despite seeing some workers still working in the middle school, I'm, I mean, I know you're gonna do a presentation in the next, probably next meeting Dave's gonna do, but middle school looks gorgeous. The, I mean, I, what I can envision for when it's complete, complete, I think, and it's not about beauty, but it is about, you know, having a building that's not a box, and is deserving, has been deserving of work for quite a while, and I'm glad we're able to get it done, and I think it's gonna make, it's gonna make the atmosphere and the, the learning atmosphere significantly better. I'm, I'm very pleased with the, the entry so far, and so, just in general, and of course, the, the steel being up and knowing that the ceiling's gonna, roof's gonna be going up on, on that building, I'm looking forward to seeing our success soon.
Yeah, I would love to tell you what the middle school looked like that on Friday, before Labor Day. If you saw what it looked like, you, we probably would have preemptively closed schools. So there was a tremendous amount of work that was done in that space, and I know we gave credit to our buildings and ground staff, who sort of followed the construction crews through, but I made sure, we should also recognize our construction manager and the general contractor and the other trades workers that were in there throughout the weekend on holidays till midnight, and sometimes ensuring that that space was in fact ready to open to students on Tuesday. So as much as I wish it was done a week or two earlier, I do appreciate the efforts of all those individuals to get it done to the place where we can open it, and now they have a lot of things that they're finishing up, and it's certainly not in its final state, but it's open, it's safe, it's accessible to students, and the other work can happen after school hours or on days when students aren't there. So we're, we're, we're sure that space will reach its full potential in the near future, and then we'll turn our attention to the Health and Wellness Center, which will be a great space for Putnam Valley.
All right, anything from anybody else? Anybody in the community?
There's nothing from the public.
Thank you.
There's a question for the board, who would like to be the voting delegate at the convention, the New York State School Board's convention? I have registered Joe, and I have registered Barbara to attend.
And that is all virtual?
All virtual, yes.
So you, each are gonna have to share your platform? And we'll have a debate.
I, I will, and it doesn't matter to me, but if it's your first time voting, then you have to take a special course beforehand. So I mean, I'm willing to do it, because I don't have to take the course, but if somebody else wants to do it and be the voting member, that's okay.
I don't need to vote, be the voting member, I've taken the course, but so.
Oh, okay. You can do, whatever.
I'll defer.
Paper, scissors?
Okay. Okay.
And that's the middle to end of October.
Correct.
And we'll be discussing the platform and all the stuff in the, probably not the next meeting, but the meeting.
School Board Association.
That's why you need that name, because they'll send it to me, yeah.
Okay. If that's it, I have resolved to adjourn the work session business meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody have a healthy, happy, safe, and productive school year.